So, welcome everyone tonight. And we are going to start and ask if we have any announcements. Ishika?
Welcome to a new year and an almost new marking period. Grades for Quarter Two will be posted on Skyward on Feb. 5th after 4:00 P.M.
All right. Thank you for those. Are there any announcements this evening? Other than that? Okay, other than that, okay. And public to be heard on agenda items only. Okay, moving on. We have a presentation tonight from Mrs. Su Choi, our principal, along with the Spring City Elementary students to present on the classroom experiences and events that highlight the connections Spring City Elementary has to the community.
Good evening. Thank you for coming and thank you for this opportunity to present about our lovely school this evening. First, I want to thank our dedicated staff and our dedicated parents for working with our students to prepare for this presentation. Mrs. Nina Lee, Mrs. Kristen Johnson, Mrs. Janet Rodinsky, Mrs. Danielle Cushman, and Mrs. Debbie Eaton all pitched in and helped out with our students. So, we're very excited to be here tonight. So, we're here to share about our Spring City School community, and this is the best story, the story best told by our children. So, I'm going to give it to Dominic to get started, okay?
Hi. My name is Dominic and I'm in second grade. We kicked off our school year with our new pavilion opening. We thank you, the school board and the Springford community, for this awesome addition to our school.
Hi. My name is Delaney and I'm in second grade. In October, the Spring City Fire Company came to visit during Fire Prevention Week. We learned all about fire safety.
Hi. My name is Hudson and I am in fourth grade. The Springford football team came to our school and shared their experiences with team building and responsibility. We learned that working together and maintaining good study habits will help with our continued success in school and collaboration with our classmates.
Hi. My name is Cooper and I'm in third grade. To continue learning about teamwork and facing challenges, we had a FaceTime meeting with Babe Ruth's grandson. We learned the history about Babe Ruth's success and how he gave back to the community.
Our biggest community event so far has been our Veterans Day celebration. We hosted over 50 veterans from our Spring City family. As a school, we learned about character traits of a veteran, the brandages of a military, and flag etiquette. We love our veterans.
Hi. My name is Emma and I am in third grade. We had a service project to collect Halloween candy. We included uplifting notes and pictures from our school. We sent these to servicemen and women serving our countries overseas.
One of our favorite days of the year is Grand Friends Day. On that day, we invite our grand friends to school to join us for a family-style pancake breakfast.
Our teachers and staff cook and serve the pancakes, which are delicious. We get to enjoy some special time with our grand friends and have a tasty treat. We look forward to this event in June.
Hi. My name is Sadie and I'm in fourth grade. The fourth grade began a garden project this year. Mrs. John's class used an aeroponic tower garden and Mrs. Eaton's class used a hydroponic garden to grow a variety of herbs and vegetables. We learned that there are different ways to grow plants.
Hi. My name is Davis and I'm in fourth grade. We also learned that it is possible to grow healthy foods in a controlled environment that does not require soil. We harvested peas, lettuce, basil, and green beans. In the spring, we will begin a new garden with different vegetables and flowers.
Next week, we get ready to prepare for the National Kindness Challenge Week. And as part of that, our students made rocks for our special members of the board. And these kindness rocks are shared amongst our students and the community. This year, we'll be having, we'll be making a special garden for it in our courtyard area. And what this is, is we're hoping that this serves as a reminder, as a thank you for all those opportunities for connections. We make connections, whether they be big connections or small connections. They come in so many forms that are so valuable and meaningful for our students. It's the start of relationship building, and that really is what we hope for, for our kids. Whether our children are in the graduating class of 2020, featured by our seniors here, or whether our children are part of our kindergarten class of 2032, we want to watch them grow and cherish every precious moment. And every day is an opportunity to teach, to learn, to grow, because we have hopes and we have dreams, that these connections build caring, compassion, and community. Because, boys and girls, what we really want to let you know is that you're important, you are loved, and you make a difference. So, we want to thank you, and we have one last little piece for you here.
community.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you for the gift. Thank you to the teachers and to Principal Choi for helping you to learn these traits that go out to everybody in the community. And look at, we're all feeling it tonight, too. So, thank you so much for a great job, and I hope you continue to do this as this year goes on and your years ahead take it with you to the rest of the schools at Springford and beyond. So, thank you.
Cooper wants to share something very special to him. This is a signed Babe Ruth photo by Babe Ruth's daughter. So, he wanted to share that with the board members today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, boys and girls. Great job.
Ms. Choi, you, the banner, you know, it's a great banner. You're so small school, big. I mean, it's, but Spring City is definitely not a small school, because Spring City Elementary School has been something that was one of the first schools that put Springford on the map when we introduced the full hybrid learning down in about, what is that, nine, 10 years ago? And it was nationally recognized throughout the country. So, we're very thrilled with the success and all the continued success and everything that's going on. And you guys are doing a great job, and all your staff is, they're amazing. And we are thrilled that Spring City is, you know, part of our school district. It's, it really truly is a community school, because most of the kids are coming within a half a mile or so of the school itself. So, it's just, it's amazing school, and we're so happy that you're part of our district as well. So, and the kids did an amazing job. They did a really great job. So, thank you for everything.
All right. Well, after that wonderful presentation, we are going to move on to Board and Committee Reports, and Linda Fazini with Curriculum and Technology.
Okay. The Curriculum and Technology Committee met Monday, January 13th at 7:38 P.M. The meeting started out with the news that Newsweek ranked America's best STEM high schools. Springford was ranked 1,363 out of over 30,000 schools. Dr. Murray provided an overview of an article in a recent PSBA publication that discussed the top trends to watch for in K-12 education. She highlighted the way Springford was already addressing these trends, and we discussed how Springford can work to continue to further expand and develop our curriculum to educate our students to meet the needs of the future workforce. A presentation was given by Dr. Murray, providing updated information regarding Act 158, which is Updates to Graduation Requirements. Information was shared regarding five pathways to graduation, and these requirements will begin with the class of 2022. Dr. Murray shared information regarding the first-ever early childhood collaboration meeting. It was held on January 17th. This is an initiative to reach out to local preschools and pre-Ks to ensure kindergarten readiness in the district. Updates were provided by Heidi Rockland regarding curriculum reviews and ongoing professional development pertaining to math, science, and music. And the school board should expect an updated curriculum and purchases for K-12 music at the February board meeting. Mrs. Rochlin also applied for and was awarded a P.A. Smart Grant, a targeted grant in 2018 and 19, for $35,000. This grant will be used on behalf of Springford and in partnership with 15 community, informal education, university, business, and formal education entities for a project titled "The Sustainability and Environmental Education Project." Updates were provided by Katie Gardi regarding curriculum reviews within the districts pertaining to ELA, social studies, and library. And the board should expect to see product recommendations for three to five social studies in February also. She also detailed the professional learning being conducted in those areas. Springford Curriculum is preparing for its summer pre-K program. Families are informed of this program and the screening process during kindergarten Also, a discussion was held about textbook contracts. All curriculum is reviewed on a scheduled cycle, and in the past, textbooks used to have seven-year contracts. But because of the use of online textbooks, updates, and technology-supporting curriculum, most contracts have become or are transitioning to one-year contracts. So, finance, curriculum, and the school board need to take this into account when we budget and when we forecast our costs. Bob Catalano was actually away, so, but there were some contracts for technology that were on the board website that the board was supposed to review. And that's pretty much it. The next meeting is Monday, February 10th, 7:30 P.M. in the district office. Are there any questions?
Just, Linda, real quick, the recognition, when we throw numbers out, what was like 1,300 out of 30,000 schools? I mean, that works out, too, that our STEM program at the high school is in the top 4% in the entire country.
Right.
So, that's a pretty impressive, you know, because we only really started this STEM initiative probably about six years ago or so, when we really went into incorporating a STEM program at the secondary level. And then, of course, then, soon after that, we introduced STEM at the elementary school. So, for us to receive that kind of recognition in such a short period of time, it's a great accomplishment. And once again, it demonstrates how successful and wonderful Springford District really, you know, is.
Yeah, and those 30,000 schools are, they're known for pretty good STEM education. Yeah.
One of the comments that I wanted to make was that we talked about that sustainability during that meeting. And when we just had that wonderful presentation, and they were talking about growing lettuce, and I think they said peas without the soil, that's touching on that iceberg. So, I think curriculum is on the ball with moving in a direction that, that is a trend that's out there. We did discuss it, and it's nice to see that we're touching on that already, even at the elementary school level. So, that was a nice connection to make. Any other questions or comments for Linda? Okay, then we'll move into policy, which is me. So, we met on January 13th prior to the curriculum meeting. We did approve the October minutes, but not the November minutes. There was a slight issue with some of the emails and ability for all committee members to access those minutes, which I believe is being worked out and resolved, so that going forward. All business, we did discuss briefly the medical excuse update, and Mr. Rizzo did tell us that administration has discussed that a demo is being set up with School Messenger, and we are working to schedule some visitations to discuss the digital submission of excuses going forward. So, further updates will be brought back in February. Not too much had happened with that over the holidays, but it is, it is in process. Correct. Okay. Policy 225, Students and the Police. The committee briefly reviewed that policy after the solicitor had reviewed and made some minor edits. The policy is being brought forward for a first reading tonight. Safety, the committee briefly reviewed that policy after the solicitor reviewed and made some minor edits, and that policy will be brought forward for a first reading tonight. Building Security, committee again briefly reviewed that policy after the solicitor reviewed and made minor edits, and that is also on the schedule for a first reading tonight. So, I'd like to move these along. The News Media Relations, we had spent a considerable amount of time in November on that policy, and we briefly reviewed that in January after the solicitor also reviewed and made minor edits, and that is also on the schedule for a first reading tonight. 208, Withdrawal from School. The committee previously approved this policy to come forward for a first reading in November, but it will be added to list of policies that are scheduled for a first reading tonight. Instead, we needed a little bit more time to just fine-tune that one before it went on in November, so that's on for tonight. We did have a discussion regarding the direction the committee will go with respect to organizing the policies and updating language under the advisement of our solicitor. The recommendation is to begin with the 100 policies and continue to develop over the next several years, the next two to three years. Attendance was on the schedule also. The discussion was tabled, though, due to a lack of time to appropriately dig into that policy, and it will be brought back in February for further consideration and review. Title I policy was discussed and revised, and the committee recommended that that policy be sent to the solicitor and brought back to the committee in February for further review.
I just wanted to add to your comment, and I agree with what you've said. The review process for policies, oftentimes, I've seen boards be overly ambitious with the attempts to review or revise all at the same time, and it creates a bit of chaos. So, certainly, if we can begin with either the zeros or the 100 series and work our way through, to the extent that over the course of a, and frankly, it will take at least a year, maybe two, to get through all of those policies, in part because I suspect, as it currently stands, we likely have somewhere around 100 or so, maybe more. So, it will take that time to review over the cycle.
Is there a way we can change the wording or update the wording to be more consistent with, you know, our policy is to comply with, you know, laws, regulations, et cetera, so that we don't, because I think the more detail we add to the policy, which, policy versus procedure, right?
Yes, I would welcome that.
The more generalized, the less...
A perfect example is, and I'm not so sure you have it, but a number of districts have it, through PSBA is a policy with regard to requirements for bidding and the obligation to obtain bids at a certain threshold. A number of PSBA policies actually set the actual dollar value, where that dollar value generally changes year over year. So, yes, if we can instead be broader, but still comply with the law, so we don't have to go back to policy committee, by all means, I would welcome that. And that will be part of the process to make sure that the policy can be flexible with changes in regulation or law.
Well, we start to do a lot of that when we're looking at the bigger policies. But is there a way that we could do a first pass-through to a number of policies to see which ones we could just throw out? Because there's probably, and we've talked about this before, where there's policies that were written many years ago that were basically regurgitating what school code is or what, you know, state requirements are and all that, where we don't need to actually have the policy.
Right. So, you really have three types of policies. You have the mandated policies, where the law actually says you have to have a policy. You have the policies that are restating the law. And then you have a handful of policies that are what I'll call locally grown policies that really come from prior administrations, prior boards, and they exist because that's what that board at that time wanted. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's something that the committee, in conjunction with our office, can review to determine what policies do we need to keep and what policies can be considered for rescission. Absolutely.
One of the things, too, that we did, as Tom just said, with the bigger policies that we've started to do, is to add in addendums or appendices or what have you, so that the numbers, dollar figures, what have you, can be updated without redoing the whole policy. So, that's, it's valuable, it's just that we're young at doing that. But going forward, we want to move in that direction.
You're not alone. I mean, a lot of districts are considering that, those issues.
So, we are on to Food Services.
Oh, I thought you were done.
No, I'm not. Okay, thanks. Food Services was discussed and revised, and the committee recommended that the policy be sent to the solicitor and brought back to the committee in February for further review. Crowdfunding was discussed and revised, and this is a new policy. And the committee recommended that the policy be, again, sent to the solicitor and brought back in February for further review. So, those are what we really focused on. It was a very productive meeting. We also talked briefly about rescinding Policy 248. That was discussed and agreed upon that we were going to do that, and I think that may have fell through the cracks a little bit, when we had talked about bringing in 348, 448, and 548. They were all rescinded, except for some reason, that 248 hadn't been. So, Mr. Rizzo caught that, and we did now agree that we're going to do that.
Just a reminder about those policies for members of the board who are new. PSBA had proposed about two years ago essentially consolidating our sexual harassment policies with our discrimination policies. So, Policies 103 and 104 have absorbed much of the sexual harassment policies that all districts have. So, Springford, along with pretty much every other district in the state, rescinded their 248 series and 348 policies because of the consolidation of the new policies.
Right. Right. We were informed, too, that there is an equity policy that's in place that will be coming forward in February for consideration after initial review and edits by the district's Equity Committee. And we were also informed that Policy 138 will be coming forward in February for consideration after initial review and edits by administration. So, there are a number of policies you'll see, I think five of them, that are here for a first read tonight. There were three that were sent over to the solicitor and one that's finally being rescinded. Our next meeting will be February 10th at 6:30 in the district office. And does anybody have any questions on what we did in policy?
I have a question.
Sure.
Could you or the superintendent explain a little bit about the Equity Committee? Who it is comprised of? And, thank you.
Actually, Beth is leading that committee. I'd like Beth to speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. It's actually called the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We just started it this year. We piloted it. It is comprised of employees throughout the school district. We have about 20 active members at this point in time, professional staff, support staff, and administrators. We currently took the full committee and split into three separate committees to get some work done. One of the committees did work on that equity policy. There's no sample, per se, to work off of through PSBA, so it's a lot of collaboration. It's a lot of research, finding policies that districts have. So, that's what you'll be seeing within the next month or so. We're also looking at professional development opportunities for our staffing in the future, as well as ways to reach out to the community to find out, to get some benchmark data about perceptions of the district.
Thank you for that. Was this a state-mandated committee or something where it just chose to take on ourselves?
This is something that we felt was needed. It was not state-mandated. You're welcome.
That was policy. And now, Dave Schaefer, do you want to talk about extracurricular?
Well, I would love to. So, the committee met on January 7th at the district office. Meeting started at 7:30, ended at 8:40. I heard from Mr. Rizzo that it was exceptionally productive, because I was not there. Thank you, Mrs. Melton, for taking such wonderful notes. I will share some highlights. There were three presentations. The High School Musical, which is for this spring, 42nd Street, will be held on March 6th and the 7th. And again, some perspective, it's a 12-week production schedule with rehearsals going Monday through Friday and on some weekends. This area has seen a lot of growth in students. It's pretty exciting for me to share this with you for some perspective. In 2014, there were a total of 44 cast members. This year, the production includes 88 cast members with a total of over 150 students involved. So, it's great to see. The eighth-grade STEM club also presented an update, and this is a relatively new club, supports what was talked about earlier with regards to the district's emphasis and support of STEM. So, there's 15 students in the eighth-grade center that meet every other week, and so coding and engineering are two areas of focus. I'll pause for reflection on that. The middle school athletics was the third presentation with the winter update, and I'll just share some statistics, because I think these are important. In the seventh to ninth-grade wrestling program, there were 46 boys that came out. There are no cuts with that particular sport. Seventh-grade boys' basketball fielded two teams. 55 young men tried out with 26 roster spots. Eighth-grade boys' basketball, 46 boys tried out, and only 14 spots were filled. Seventh-grade girls' basketball fields two teams, 34 tried out, 26 roster spots. Eighth-grade girls' basketball, 28 tried out with 15 roster spots filled. Seventh to eighth-grade cheerleading in the winter, 27 girls tried out, 21 spots were filled. There was a discussion around the potential for a second set of teams for eighth-grade basketball. One last thing in other business, Mrs. Melton raised the request for extracurricular contracts for the Spring's Jamboree that was included in the board packet on 12/13. This request was for 11 hours, each at the fourth grade and intermediate levels, 13 hours at the middle school level, and 14 hours at the high school level. The next meeting, and I'll certainly address any questions, is scheduled for March 3rd.
And just to tag on, I do believe that we have an action item on the agenda with regards to the Spring's Jamboree.
So, in reference to that, how were those hours calculated?
They were calculated just simply by meeting with Mrs. McGrannahan, who has headed up that program for a few years, and taking a look at the number of hours that they either have practice after school, which they do have a practice before their performance, and then the performance itself. That's how they came up with those hours.
I know that, I'm passing, I asked Mr. McDaniel, because we've been talking about this, and my understanding is, I don't know if you guys talked about it... this, and my understanding is, I don't know if you guys talked about it, at the meeting or not, about having two 7th grade football teams next fall. Was that something you guys discussed, or?
No, that was not on the agenda. Mr. McDaniel was not at the meeting this month, but it is something that we did talk about, and I think I had shared with the board in the November meeting. The plan was for Mr. McDaniel to include the addition of a second 7th grade football team in his budget for next year. But again, as we get into the budget process, and really, we're able to identify, you know, what we have, what we don't have, that may be an area that would be, you know, kind of line itemed, you know, crossed off, depending on where his funding is. So, again, he's looking at the potential for a second 7th grade football team, as well as the potential for adding a boys' volleyball team at the high school level. So, again, you know, that's, those both come with additional cost. He will add those into his budget for next year, and depending on where that budget falls out, if something needs to be eliminated, it would be something that we have never implemented, would be the first thing, I think, that we would remove.
What are the sports where the second team is right now?
Where there are two teams. 7th grade boys' basketball, 7th grade girls' basketball.
Also, baseball, softball, and soccer. Both soccers, boys' and girls' soccer, and they're all at the 7th grade level only.
And wasn't there some discussion last year that it was going to be piloted again this year, because there was a lack of place, and there was a lack of other teams to play? Our kids. There was something about that. Has that been resolved?
Well, so, things have been going much better. So, yeah, that was, one of the things we're seeing is, a lot of the other districts are eliminating teams, so they may come in saying, yes, we're going to have two teams, and they end up having one. Or they're merging to, you know, maybe two intermediate schools are being merged for a single team, kind of a thing, as opposed to two separate teams. So we're seeing some movement there, which has created a little confusion in terms of scheduling, and making sure that there's sufficient competition for all of the teams and all of our students who are participating. But with that said, it seems to have been much better. Transportation seems to have been working out, as have the kind of use of facilities and access to the gyms and the fields, and, you know, kind of the resources necessary. So things seem to be going well so far. Again, you know, this year, we had both soccer in the fall, and now we have both basketballs, and they seem to be balancing out well.
So, is the plan to, if that continues to grow, is the plan to expand that, then, to keep growing that? Or, what's the thought?
There were a couple different paths that could be taken. One was to expand that to the 8th grade level, which I think at this point, given some of the numbers that Mr. Shaefer shared, I'm not sure that that's something that, at this point, the middle school's looking to do at this, right now, with those teams. And then the other option is evaluating whether or not there's an opportunity to expand with other sports and activities, which, again, we're kind of keeping a look at the number of students that are trying out, or coming out for various teams, and the number of roster spots that are available, and whether or not we seem to be in a pretty good spot with that, or whether that expansion would be needed in the future.
Well, thank you for continuing to watch that.
So that was, all that originally was put into budget, so I don't know what, and two years ago, for two years, there was one 7th grade team, and then 7th slash 8th grade and all. But I did ask him, because I need to know for other reasons, and they're planning on two teams, because they have two schedules lined up. So I can't imagine that if we run into a budget issue, that cutting a second 7th grade football team is going to be a budget concern. But we, this was, that was the, the football was, that was the whole start of this pilot program, because that had the most, and that seems to be the one that we keep not being able to do. But I, you know, up from him, he has, he's figuring on two teams, because they already have, because they have to make these schedules. So they're looking at, they already have two schedules, seven games each. So I think it's something that we just need to make sure that gets pushed through.
So Mickey, for the agenda on March 3rd, which isn't that far away, he's going to be presenting on that, so we'll have more on that. Thank you very much. That was my debut.
Well, thank you, Dee. Okay, Mr. DeBello?
At least, Mr. DeBello, I used my microphone.
I, you know, I'm not used for, you know, not hitting it. But anyway, so we went through the monthly reports, checking the health of the district from a financial standpoint. Currently, we're at $119 million. Last year, we were at about $130 million. So the balance includes $8 million in receivables that we're still waiting from the state. So we're, no alarms as of yet. The state sometimes is a little slow in paying their obligation to the school district. Revenues are approximately about $3 million ahead of expected funds. Again, it's good news, as far as monies are coming in. Operating expenses, as of right now, we're slightly under budget as of year-to-date. Nothing to do backflips about just yet, but we typically could see somewhat us come in a little under budget. Our overall benefits, we're at 67% of payroll, so, you know, we're good. We're liking where the numbers are at so far. Assessments are up $10 million. We're averaging about $5.8 to $6 million increases in assessments per month. So we're, again, we're based on our budgeted numbers. We're possibly going to come in higher on what we budget from assessments, which is good. I know Jim is excited to, I know we were all excited when we crossed that $4 billion mark in assessments. Now we're looking at, we're at $4.099 billion, so that, we're going to have one more tick soon to go over to 4.1, which is exciting, right? So that means the community and the area is continuing to grow. Our real estate transfer taxes are slightly slower than the previous year, but we're still ahead of, we should be okay as far as where we end up at the end of the year. Earning income taxes are up about $200,000 from the prior year. And this was the year that we, was it this year, Jim, that we increased to 10.3? This was the first year we went to, so we actually increased to 10.3 million in our budget, and we're at $200,000 where we think we're going to be at. So we may even come in a little higher than 10.3 million. Our self-funded insurance costs were higher than budget for the first four months, but are settled down and leveling out. So we're in good shape with that as well. We are, our food services is doing well. We continue to see an increase in lunches, lunch sales. We're actually going to, through Jim's recommendation, next month, we're actually going to break it down a little bit further in our reports, since we've added the breakfast portion of all our numbers, because we want to see how that's growing, and then we want to compare to the revenue numbers for breakfasts and lunches. So we'll keep you posted on that. High School Project, financially, we really didn't have much of a change in expenditures. I think there was a $3,000 change or so, but we are going to finish that project out a little overtime because of the elevator situation, but we are going to come in under budget, which is great. We briefly talked about the preliminary 2021 budget. This is going to be an exciting year for all the board members, because we're going to have some very difficult expenditures to deal with when we look at the growth in some areas. The biggest area that is going to have an impact on this year's budget is around professional employees' contract. We're in year four of that, so we've got to look at those growth, well, we know what the growth numbers were, because we had this all modeled out over the last couple of years. So we just got to balance that out with looking at what our growth in revenues may be. Hopefully, we'll see a little bit more uptake from the state as well, but definitely won't hold our breath on that. We will be looking at it, February, March, we'll be doing a deep dive into the budget. We'll be going through, well, we won't, Jim and his team will be going through it, and looking at all of the areas that are increasing, and seeing what we can, if anything, level out, smooth out. But right now, if the board remembers, we're projected somewhere around a 4% increase. But I think that we may come in under that as we take closer look at our projections and revenue growths and all that. But this is the year that we warned against four years ago, that we knew this was coming, and so could have an impact on our expenditures. There's a few public comments, just asking questions about our capital reserve and that. One of the things we talked about, well, we actually talked about our property as well, that, you know, we have monies that will be coming available in the next couple of years, that we want to be able to earmark and redirect back into our capital projects, because if the board remembers, I talked about this last month from the finance, is that we average about $2 million a year in capital projects. While as our buildings are getting older, and we've got several things that are coming to end of life, we will be most likely increasing our annual projects, capital projects, to about $5 million a year. So when monies become available through our annual debt service, we need to redirect that money into capital projects, so that we could continue keeping these buildings at the levels that they're at now. If we don't, we will run into the same problems that many other districts ran into when they kept pushing off their annual maintenance plans. You keep pushing or kicking the can down the road, something that costs a million dollars today will cost you $5 million tomorrow. And we've seen a lot of buildings in other districts quickly deteriorate, because they don't keep up with the annual maintenance schedule, and we will be getting into more details about that in the near future, as we jump into the feasibility study that's being completed at this point. Meeting adjourned at 7:11. Hey, 7:11, how about that? We didn't have any slushies.
No, you forgot them.
Forgot the slushies. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that detailed report. Yes, thank you. And property followed finance, correct? But Mr. Jackson is not here tonight, so we want to defer that to next week? Or do you want to comment on that?
I could do it real quick, if you want.
That's fine, if you want to give us that report, especially if it piggybacks on anything that you just had said in the finance report.
So property, the property meeting was right after finance, as you said, and it wasn't a long meeting. I mean, we really, the two main topics were the update on the high school expansion, and where, you know, getting completion dates related to the elevator, and getting the final permits, because of the fire strobes has been worked out. So we're just waiting for the final inspections on that, so that the entire building will be turned over to the district. I believe that their goal was that the elevator and everything surrounding the elevator was going to be completed this week, end of this week is the goal, or?
Yeah, the ancillary items completed this week, with the schedule for inspection with the state within two weeks.
Yeah, so hopefully by mid-February, we will be putting a bow on this project and sealing it up and being done. Another, and that, it was a couple small projects that are going on in the district. I think there was one action item that's going to be on the agenda this evening on the property, right, Bob?
Yeah, it's the window project at 9th grade.
Right, the window project at the 9th grade center. So that's on, will be for discussion this evening, approval for next week. And then finally, we got an update from our police, and without getting into a lot of things, I will say that they are continuing with their training. There's a lot of good things that are going on in the district surrounding our Springfield Police Department. They will continue to be one of the top police departments in, school police departments in the state of Pennsylvania. We have, the new vehicles are in function and being used. You know, we have rotations throughout the, throughout the district. Things are going really smooth. Chief Boyer's doing a great job. And I believe in one of the upcoming meetings, we're going to be recognizing a possible change in position of one of his people in his department as well, so we'll be excited to see that coming up.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Mr. DeBello, just a quick question. I know that there was some work done reevaluating the buildings throughout the district, kind of an assessment district-wide. Has that been completed yet? And if not, is there an estimated timeframe? And will we get a report on where things stand?
Yeah, so the building assessment has been completed. I think we reported on that towards the end of last year. And then we're in phase two, which is the feasibility study that's going on now, which will, is, if you remember, you're familiar with the feasibility studies that we do every five years. That will then tie back to the building assessment, because part of feasibility study, it tells us what the population's going to look like in the next five to 10 years, make some other predictions and all that, and then that all gets tied together. And I believe, one of the things we did talk about is, at some point in the future, near future or so, we will be having a presentation at the board meeting that will go through more of this in detail, because it ties back to what I talked about from a finance standpoint. You can see how it all, it's all interconnected, and that's why it's extremely important, because at some point in the near, some point this year, I believe as a board, that we should develop a strategy, or define a strategy, agree on that strategy, so that we could implement that, and it could be a multi-phase approach to how we're going to, you know, do building projects, capital projects, how they're going to be funded for in the next two years, and then how they're going to be funded for after that, so that we could lay out the entire plan, which then ties into basically the building assessment, because that's a 20-year look into the district. So it's a big initiative, it's extremely important, and, you know, I talked about this last year, towards the end of last year, and as a board, it's something that I recommend, and that we really harness, you know, harness this, because it will set what this district, from a building facility standpoint, will look like for the next 20 years. And, again, it goes back to, everybody, you know, is in awe of how we're able to keep these buildings at the state that they're in, and we need to continue that. And we have a, we have a plan, we just need to be able to execute on that.
Thank you.
May I ask you a question, just, and I realize, Mr. DeBello, you're filling in for the report here. As it relates to, so you mentioned safety. So safety, from sort of a reporting perspective, goes up through property? Is that how this, you know, and again, just, so, okay, is there, and that answers my question, I'll attend to property.
I just want to, it doesn't go up through property. When we're looking at, when we're looking at each of the committees, and when we decided, after we hired Chief Boyer, and we decided that, as a board, we decided that it makes sense for us to get an monthly update, you know, from Chief, where did it make most sense? And because a lot of the stuff that he was doing and continues to do is related to, from a facility standpoint, we thought that it was important that we just put it with, because we didn't want to create another committee, because I don't think, well, I know Chief Boyer could fill an hour.
He can.
He could definitely fill an hour. But we didn't think that we wanted to give Chief Boyer that hour. But, so that's why we, that's why, where we kind of...
And recognizing it's relatively speaking new, right? So I was just curious as to, and I'm new again, if there was the discussion possibly for another committee, I think having a safety committee or something along those lines, even if it were temporary, to me, would make sense, because of the importance. It goes well beyond, obviously, property. So, but that could be something to just, from, you know, to think about.
I think he spends quite a bit of time in a number of committees. I know he comes to policy, too, because we have to have the policies set for safety and how things, how that, his group is going to operate in the buildings, and it crosses over many boundaries. So I don't know that we've totally found where he's going to land. So I don't know that we've totally found where he's going to land, and maybe it will be a new committee eventually. But right now, it seemed that was the best fit. And while he is also contributing, as I said, and present at many of the other board meetings because there is so much crossover.
Right. And please note, my questioning was not to get Chief Boyer to attend any more of our committee meetings. It was because of the uniqueness that perhaps maybe an ad hoc committee would be something that, given that it's new, and perhaps there was one to formulate the investment that we'd made. So, thank you.
Well, the key, if you remember, we started this eight years ago. So this has been an ongoing, you know, initiative that we kept growing, you know. So it really, and like Colleen said, I mean, Chief is at multiple, you know, committees, meetings. And I'm not, I don't want to get into, because then we start to get into duplicative effort because a lot of stuff that he would talk about, if we got to get, if we had another committee, the things that he would talk about, he would still have to go to another committee meeting to talk about the same, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of, but if there's something that there's, if there's something that there's a specific area that we want to tackle and we and we want to just, it's just something, an open and closed thing, then we could use the ad hoc committee for that. That's why that's there. And then we could do that if there's, you know, if there's, if we see there's something of a particular area that we want to.
I mean, the sort of the heart of the questioning was for me to learn, really. Because I know that certainly, A, it's vitally important, B, we're doing a great job. And so C, you know, is there a board-level strategy that's set out and versus having, you know? So there's, there's more to contemplate. I just thought that I would ask. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And moving on to Assistant Superintendent Report, Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you. First, welcome new board members. Welcome to your first business meeting. And welcome to the community, to the 2020 school year, wishing us all, or 2020 year, wishing you all great vision. First announcement, very excited about this one, classroom. Congratulations to the Springford High School teachers for squeaking past the Springford student team during the airing of the Springford edition of Class H, Classroom, on January 14. The trivia-based program aired at 6:30 PM and pitted students against their teachers to earn the distinction of classroom champions. While the students maintained a significant lead over the teachers throughout the episode, the teachers pulled a dramatic last-minute win, thanks to Aaron Crew, all of the students, teachers, and of course Rowdy for making this fun and exciting event possible. Caught in the act, as I told you a few meetings ago, I'm going to start highlighting teachers and students for doing great things. Caught in the act, Upper Providence teacher Bill Kulp started his career in 1999 as a teacher at Limerick Elementary School. He has also taught at Evans Elementary and eventually landed at Upper Providence Elementary. Over his career, he has worked closely with RCTV as a show host as well as behind the scenes. Bill is often heard at sporting events on the PA system announcing our players with pride. Bill is also a resident of our community and a parent in school district. Thanks to his children's involvement in music and theater, Bill is a frequent supporter of the Springford Music Events as well. Bill is one of those amazing individuals who makes everyone around him feel valued. He is the man that loves the microphone and uses it to feature the strengths of others. As a teacher, he's an outstanding team player that focuses on high engagement and the elevation of student voice in the classroom. Springford is a better place for everyone, thanks to Bill Kulp. Enthusiasm, dedication, humor, and pride describe this outstanding colleague. Thanks for being one of our proudest Ram champions at Springford. Student spotlight blast from the past, Kyle Rosenbloom graduated from Springford in 2016. He is currently a senior psychology and policy studies major and a member of the Renee Crown University Honors Program. He has been selected as a finalist for the prestigious Schwarzman Scholarship Program. Kyle is the first Schwarzman finalist from Syracuse University since the Schwarzman Scholars Program launched in 2015. Kyle says he dedicated, Kyle says he decided to apply because it would provide him unparalleled opportunities to be immersed in China's culture, to develop critical leadership skills, and gain an incredible network of future innovators and changemakers. Each year, the Schwarzman Scholarship Program selects roughly 150 students out of thousands of applicants. Forty percent come from the United States, 20% from China, and 40% from the rest of the world. Congratulations to Kyle and his families for this prestigious honor. Upcoming events, the Springford Area High School Avietum Club is hosting a self-care night on January 31 at 5:30 PM. The concept for this night and its activities have been developed by the Avietum students for other students to help with stress and anxiety. It is a night of learning, connecting with others, and taking care of one's mental, physical, and emotional well-being. The self-care night falls at the end of our Great Kindness Challenge Week, held worldwide from January 27 through 31. The Great Kindness Challenge empowers students to create a culture of kindness, but families can participate as well. Visit thegreatkindnesschallenge.com and click on the Family Edition for your family kindness checklist. Dr. Gooden will share more information about the Great Kindness Challenge next week. The Future Planning Center, here's the plug for the FPC, is looking for Career Month speakers for the month of March. If you have any family or friends that have really cool jobs and you think they would be comfortable talking to a group of teenagers about it, send them to the Future Planning Center. Speakers can be scheduled for any day in the month of March, either before or after lunch. Finally, Springford has launched a podcast. The first two episodes of the Ram Cast are available on Apple Podcasts, Spotify, the Springford website, or wherever you listen online. The Ram Cast gives parents, students, and the Springford community a peek into the everyday happenings at Springford. Hosts Aaron Crew and Andrew Rothenmel will introduce you to administrators, teachers, students, and parents, and other members of the Springford community. Visit the Springford website to learn more and listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any questions for Mr. Rizzo? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Just very briefly, all board members should have in front of them a copy of a legal compendium. We've taken great strides over the years to make this more readable. And what I mean by that is, it used to be, well, it used to be the size of the school code here. And we realized, well, we're killing too many trees and people just won't read it. So, and we worked with the Montgomery County IU to prepare this. So typically, it's for for new board members, but I brought for returning board members a copy as well. What I would say from a legal perspective to all all board members is that I think if you're going to start anywhere in this, areas to review would be the Sunshine Act. It would be the right-to-know law, free speech issues, and issues involving state ethics. Those are really the fundamentals for for school board members. And then I'm a bit biased because I'm a labor and employment attorney by by trade. I would go to the personnel sections next because there's a lot of issues regarding how districts are regulated with regard to their employees, from from the teaching staff to support staff. So I think that's a really vital area to look at next. And if there are any questions, there's a lot of information for any board member. Please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the minutes. Are there any questions on the minutes? Moving on further in the agenda, personnel, A through H. Any questions? Finance, A through P. Questions there? Property, A. Questions on that? Programming and curriculum, A and B?
I have a, I have a lot of questions, but this needs to be an exec session.
So with A and B, under programming and curriculum, there are some questions about the actual services to be provided. So, Mr. Fitzgerald, can you comment? Would we be okay, and within our right to have an exec session, say, following this meeting, related to, not the contract per se, but the actual services to be provided?
I think the answer to the question is yes, as relates to the services, the need for the services, and what it would provide to us. Questions with regard to the contract language, no. But but substantive services and how it relates to security issues, then that that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions on A and B right now? We'll hold those. Okay, conferences and workshops, A through J. I don't have play on here. Okay, K wasn't on the original one that I had here. Questions on A through K? I had a question on H. My question about that Leadership Institute for School Change Adult Development. Can somebody clarify that, Dr. Gooden?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Rizzo.
Excuse me. Dr. Patchke requested to attend this conference. Excuse me, a call from your direction. This conference really focuses on 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 leadership and change at the at the adult level, at the teacher level, at the administrative level, and focusing on on ways to implement appropriate change. And it kind of aligns with the direction that we're going in the district, which is why she made the request.
So she would bring that information back to share with the other administrators?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on conferences and workshops? Okay, other business, A through D. Okay, well, I'd like to bring up the calendar. We've had a couple of versions that have been shared with us. And if Dr. Gooden or Mr. Rizzo would like to explain those a little bit so the board could have a bit of a discussion around that calendar and provide some direction for what we would be voting on next week, I think we would appreciate that very much.
You have two versions. Version one is a start date of August 24, end date of June 10. That includes the three snow makeup days. And the second version would be a start date of August 31 with an end date of June 17. There are some considerations to to an early start that we have considered that have to do primarily with, you know, some issues that we looked at out as far as our sports schedules, getting practices in, things along that line. So we have two versions to, for your consideration. It seems that a lot of the districts in Montgomery County are planning on going August 31. We also looked at the the approved calendars for the other two sending schools for our VOTAC. And so August 31 would be in line with those schools as well.
What's the recommendation from administration?
At this point, once we've considered all the variables, recommendation will be August 31.
Could I ask why the, why it was ever changed to be before Labor Day? I know I'm going back centuries, but when we went to school, summer ended Labor Day, and everybody got your head around, now we're starting the school year. Now it's kind of you go back and oh, and then we have a vacation. So I was just, what was the reasoning for moving it before Labor Day?
That was done probably 25, 30 years ago. So I don't think we could answer that question, well, why they did it or what they were thinking.
I will say as a parent, you know, with with my children returning to school prior, you know, or parent of alumni, I actually liked kind of the four-day. It eased students back into the process, kind of get all of the paperwork and all the syllabus reviews and all of the first-day packet stuff done and out of the way before they kind of came in after Labor Day, ready to kind of hit the ground running.
Yeah, but they're starting on a Monday.
That, I'm sorry?
They're starting on a Monday. The 31st is a Monday.
Right, they always do. So they'll have, they'll go to school 31st, and then they'll go first, second, and third, and then they would be off that Friday and Monday for Labor Day weekend. So it's a four-day week. So it just kind of is nice to kind of get my perspective as, you know, having been a parent, go through the process.
Well, also, when you take a look at the calendar, you've got 180 student days. You have 190 or 190, 10 additional days for faculty, for professional development. Then you look at the other days that were off, that school is not in session for students. We use our buildings, for example, for as polling places within the district. And the decision was made many years ago to not have school in those days. So there's a variety of different reasons that day, you know, the week of, you know, before Thanksgiving, for example, we have our, that's when we schedule our parent-teacher conferences, so students aren't here. You've got, you know, you've got different days off throughout the calendar. And so it just pushes us, it pushes us later into June.
Frankly, I can see the value in the 24th, other than it interfering with PIAA and the tech school. As a parent of kids in the district, I think that they're excited to go back. I mean, they say, oh, you know, but they are excited. They get to see who's in their classes, who their teachers are. They get settled. I think June is a much more difficult time to get them out to that bus stop in the morning. So if we're pushing it to June 17, which is after APs and after Keystone's, I think that's going to be a challenge. I think it's going to be a challenge for our teachers. And certainly, they're just more teachable in August, would be my, from my experience. And Maggie, I know you also have experience in education. So would you, what's your thought process on that?
I have to agree with some of what you're saying there, that once the PSSAs are done in Keystone's in May, it does make it more difficult, more challenging on our teachers to keep the students engaged into June. Not that they they aren't capable of doing it, but it is more challenging. I, but I'm looking, and I agree. I mean, I don't know that there's any one right answer for this. I was looking at, I see that, I mean, this is a cycle that happens every, what, like seven years or something? And I think that we want to look at, see how it had, if we've had any difficulties in the past. Doesn't seem to be so. If the other districts in the area are going to go with the later, you know, stick to what we always have the week before, I think that's probably our best bet.
We did look at the other, what the other neighboring districts are doing. And generally, they are starting on the 31st, not just even the schools that we're with at the CTC. But generally, I believe Mr. Rizzo has that breakdown. They're generally starting August 31. So I think there's an argument on either side, frankly. But, and I don't want to just do something because that's what we've always done. But at the same time, there are reasons that we've done what we've always done. So there's an argument for that, too.
It was mentioned in here that we also looked at the 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 union. Did we consider, we consulted with them also, representation from that and got an input from them? Is that correct?
Yes, we still kindly got a first comment on Facebook, which I wasn't happy about, but yes.
Yeah, I wasn't going to go there, but now you brought it up, sorry. I mean, how we had, how there was an internal meeting and with, from that internal meeting with administration and the Teachers Union, and how it went from an internal meeting, and I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. I don't want everybody running out of here saying, you know, Mr. DeValle accused us. I'm not accusing anybody of anything. All I know is that.
Nor is Colleen Zizowski.
It was Colleen. There was a meeting with the administration, the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and representatives from the Teachers Association. And before we even got any information, yeah, before we even got any information in our board packet to say, here's the draft calendars, it was already on Facebook. There was, there was all kind of hoopla going on, and parents were already being informed that, you know, the school board's talking about starting the 24th. And I'm like, well, did I miss a meeting somewhere? Because we didn't even have this conversation. And so it was everywhere. And it even got, you know, further where somehow there was draft versions of the calendars posted on Facebook. So how that happened, I find it appalling because if the administration can't have internal conversations with staff to figure out, you know, what kind of recommendations they want to make without it being posted all over the place, then moving forward, my recommendation is you cut everyone out of the loop and you make a recommendation to the board, and that's it. Because if we want to, you know, Because if we want to, you know, it's, it's just, it's just ridiculous. Cause people start calling me and they're going, well, what's going on with this school calendar? And I said, I haven't even seen it yet, what are you talking about? Well, it's on Facebook. So it's, 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 it's appalling. It's ridiculous, there was a lot of hoopla over nothing because seven years ago or five years ago, whatever it was, the last time, uh, Labor Day was around September 7th. We moved the calendar, uh, the start time was 30, around the 31st. And it's like all this rigmarole because we have a set calendar, we have so many days. We already know when we have to start if we want to finish by a certain date. We already know all this. This has been the same calendar that's been in play for over probably 15 years, the, the same cycle. So it's not like it's rocket science. It's like, this is when we have to start if we want to finish by this date. If we want to start earlier, we'll finish earlier. If we want to start later, we'll finish later. But there's a set cycle and it's, it's just crazy. It's just, it's just crazy. I can't believe how much excitement was built up around this calendar.
Also, in answer to Dr. Wright's, uh, initial question, we do, uh, prepare drafts of our calendar and we, uh, get input from, uh, our administrative team. And we, then we take that input and, uh, we share another version with our, uh, when we meet with our association representatives. And once we clear those two, then we, um, begin sharing with our school board. Somehow or another this year, uh, that information was out in the rank and file at a level that I am not comfortable with. And so that will be addressed, but we certainly do get input in the development of that.
Great, thank you very much for, for answering that. And, and I, I'm sure everybody feels very passionately, I think, about the start and end date and get very, are very interested to hear about, about it. And I have to say that, that part of the calendar doesn't concern me so much about starter. And I, I agree with what I'm hearing up here is that we're looking at what the administrator input is, what the community is, uh, other communities are doing, and that's the good basis for the decision. Um, I, I do look at the number of in-service days for our teacher for professional development throughout the calendar. And that's something that at a, a later date at some point, I'd love to, to talk about more because there are, um, large amounts of time where we don't have professional development, um, on the agenda there. So, I mean, on the calendar there, but another day. Thank you.
So thank you. So, um, going forward then with a calendar for, um, next week, are we most comfortable, a little direction from the board here, are we most comfortable with the 24th or the 31st?
31st, that's administration's recommendation. Mr. DeBello, what is this Facebook you speak of?
I don't know, I don't know what it is. People talk about it all the time, like, I have to be-
So 31st for me, sounds great.
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with whatever the administration recommends.
Yeah, I think it's administration's recommendation that'll be on the agenda, right?
Okay, alright.
Feedback, feedback I was getting from community was 31st as well. They were not happy with it, 24th for whatever reason.
They would have never been unhappy if stuff wasn't snuck out before we actually had a conversation.
Well, exactly, I thought that it was me because I'm new and I thought maybe I was missing something. I was like, where was this, where was this put together? I didn't hear anything about it.
The irony was that we were having all these discussions that, you know, we knew nothing about. So, yeah, no, it wasn't, that wasn't, okay. Moving on, B through D, were there any questions on those policies that we're putting forward or rescinding under other business? Okay, informational items, A and B.
As always, just, you know, acknowledging, you know, Oaks Elementary Parent Teacher Association, it's, it's great when we, um, as a district, receive support from our parents and, and, um, community members and, you know, $15,000 to be used, uh, to help create positive impact on students by fulfilling teacher wish lists. I mean, I think here's some of the things that they're talking about with robotics and art matters and read, you know, resources for reading specialists. It's just, it's very broad and, and just amazing, um, you know, opportunities for our teachers and, and really, really is always just so greatly appreciated, um, from the district.
Thank you for that. Okay, board comment.
The, the one didn't seem to come up anywhere, but our, our music program at the high school, uh, prior to us having our winter break was down in Atlanta attending the Peach Bowl week. And, you know, they went down, I believe the chorus, orchestra, the band, the marching band, color guard. Uh, they were able to perform in the Peach Bowl parade. They were able to perform at the stadium the night before. I believe they had a performance before the Peach Bowl. And they have multiple competitions that went on. And, um, not surprisingly, I'll say, is that our band, because they're, the, the kids are amazing. They're, I mean, they're just awesome, walked away with, I believe it was 11 plus awards and championships and recognition. They did an incredible job. I mean, they went down to Atlanta and not only did they make a statement, but they slammed it home. And I'm sure, uh, the other bands that came from other parts of the country were just in awe of, of our, our, our Spring Ford, uh, um, music program and, and their performances. And, um, unfortunately, I didn't see much other than the performance the night before at the stadium was on face, on Facebook. And, uh, there was clips of them in the parade. So, um, it's always exciting, we'll see our band travel so far and come back with such high regards and recognition and awards and achievements. So I just want to put that out there as well.
A, a nice shout out to them and to, um, the teachers at the gala last week who really showcased their skills and their abilities and what they bring to our music department and our students here at Springford. So shout out to the accomplishments of our, our students for their accomplishments and for being, having the opportunity to participate in the Peach Bowl and for our teachers, as I said, and what they bring. And, um, I believe that there is gonna be a commendation on the, uh, agenda for next week's meeting, just to recognize our students and their participation in the Peach Bowl. Because that really is quite, quite an accomplishment, quite an honor to be invited to go there. One other piece under board comment, moving away from that a minute, uh, is that, I, I probably should have mentioned this during, um, policy, but there is crossover between policy and extracurricular, too, on the piece that Mr. Rizzo and, um, Mr. McDaniel have been working on regarding participation in multiple activities. So just so that it's out there, um, that we are actively, actively working on a piece that really is gonna start with athletics and extracurricular, but, but move into all of the extracurriculars. And, uh, Mr. Rizzo, do you want to comment any further on that?
Sure, I would just say that, uh, Mr. McDaniel's working very hard to build a very robust document that covers all areas of what, the primary document is, is about coaching and how to be, how to be an appropriate coach and educator, um, and, and meet the needs of students. But then there's the parent piece as well, so that we have a clear understanding of what the roles are of students, the role of the coach and role of the parent as we kind of go forward through that relationship. So I look forward to that coming forward. It's been developing quite nicely. The, the coaching piece is about 50 pages so far, uh, so it's a light read. And then the parent piece is a little bit smaller, more like four to six pages.
As we move into the, um, season with the limerick to limerick upon us, we certainly don't want to have the opportunity or the occasion where a student maybe wouldn't participate because of concerns of repercussion or consequence. And I believe that we talked about awareness and sharing, um, discussions about consequences or potential issues upfront, um, with students so that that wouldn't be, um, something that would take a student or a family by surprise. Is that correct? And we are gonna possibly share that in an, an email and in a conversation if it, that book isn't, that handbook isn't finished by that time. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our, our goal is to be completely transparent in our process and what it means to commit to one organization versus committing to something else and how families and students can help navigate that with their coach and sponsor.
Just based on what you said, what you just said is, is moving away from exactly what we're trying to avoid. And there's not supposed to be main consequences if a student ends up participating in two Spring Ford. That's the concern. That is, that is the huge concern, that if a student is, 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 there's consequences to a student because they have elected to participate in a Spring Ford. For example, we'll use the lim, because you brought it up, the Limerick to Limerick Exchange Program. And this, this went back to, um, last year it was that there was a, a student that participated in that. And there was hard ramifications from the coach because they're participating in that exchange program for two weeks. And that's what our concern is aboard. So I'm gonna have a real problem if there's hard consequences for a student that ends up participating in two different overlapped of Spring Ford activities.
And that's the goal of that handbook, to have that not be the, be the occasion, be the occur.
I, I think, and, and maybe I just interpret the word consequences differently because I think you're ta, maybe, you know, you're, you're hearing it and taking it to an extreme. I think to the extent that there may be a student who misses a significant portion of a season, perhaps they are not a starter in, in the next, I mean, so there may be some, um, you know, consequence. And the consequence would be based on, you know, look, if, if a student chooses not to show up for a week, there are gonna be consequences in that situation as well. And that choice may, may, um, result in heavier consequences to the student. Whereas if they're participating in a school event, they can continue to play, you know, as, as a member of the team. But maybe due to physical fitness purposes that, you know, and training purposes because they've been away for a while, not quite as, um, you know, going to the gym every day, lifting weights. Uh, you know, maybe it would be considered more concerning and, and from a safety perspective, better to limit the, the time. So I think with each coach, you know, it makes sense to have some level of, you know, could be this, but again, not taking anything to an extreme. Meaning a student who would be a starting player wouldn't be excluded from participation, period, for any specific period of time. More based on that student's ability, uh, when they return and where they are and, and, you know, how they can be safe.
And my concern, too, is that it's not done in isolation, that the coach isn't maybe making that decision in, in isolation. But we have to get something out perhaps before that, that manual is done and can be shared with other activities. But you and I have talked about that.
So, and I apologize for not being clear. Punishing students for attending a school function is nowhere in our vernacular at all. It's also irresponsible of me to share a draft version of a document that isn't, that hasn't gone through the vetting process. So suffice it to say that our language protects the student that wants to do more than one thing. And, and we're not talking about receiving a consequence. What we're talking about is if there is a conflict, that the families and the sponsors of both groups be in communication and do what's best for the child, whatever that looks like. And that could look different for any child in any given trip. Our goal is to keep the conversation open between the parents and the district to do what's best for the child.
In, in a, in an attempt to be a little blunder, uh, we, uh, we want to make sure that no student is in an either or situation. Where if they want to participate in one activity, they, they're not gonna be told, well, you can't because you can't be a member of our team if you participate in that. We are not gonna tolerate that and that's the language that we're working on.
I'd be clear, I'm not talking about it like a student could participate in two different sports. You know, where they're, one, one night they're here, one night they're there. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about that, two big issues that hit the district real quick over the last couple of years. The first time this popped up was that we had a student that was in a percussion team. They ended up moving on through competitions and championships and they kept moving on beyond the season. And then the, the student was participating in, in, in another sport. And that student was told that you have to, you can't participate in the percussion anymore, now you're part of this. And, and they only had like one possible, two more competitions, but that's what the student was told by the coach. So he was, that student was given an ultimatum. Either you quit percussion or you're off the team. And the other issue was one we just talked about where a student wanted to be participate in the Ireland Irish Exchange Program, where they were gonna be gone for two weeks and there was, and, and I'm not saying that they're given any special treatment. We got, and it's a fine, and I get it, it's a fine line. But that student was told, you can't do that or you, you know, because if you do that, there's gonna be severe consequences. And I'm not gonna get into, to specifics of what those consequences were. And that's what sparked this because they're two Spring Ford events. We do all these things for kids to be able to participate. And if these kids are, you know, if kids are put in a situation where they're given ultimatums, um, that's where we have a problem.
We're on the same page.
So logistically, if I may, because it sounds like, so will this be eventually, um, drafted as a policy and we're gonna sort of do that without any guidelines? Is that why you said something about policy?
No, I said about policy because it first came up in there, but we're not sure that it should be a specific policy or part of a handbook. But because we have a, maybe our, just our pulse on it, um, we still want to kind of look at the language in policy. And it does obviously cross over to extracurricular. I just, my just, my concern, yes, while we are on the same page and, and in terms of the consequence, I was thinking more line, along the lines of what Christina said, um, than, of course, no punishment. That's the whole point of doing this, this piece to begin with. But I, I think it's ultra important, and even if we don't have that finished, that we get something out in an email or in, in, in print somewhere, a small version. We're doing this, but I don't want any of the coaches to make any decisions as we move into that, that timing for the Limerick to Limerick is coming up. And I, I don't want that to, I don't want it to get lost in the shuffle because we're still doing, because we're still working on. I know you can't bring the whole thing forward and it would be irresponsible to do that because it hasn't been vetted. But there needs to be some focus on that so that the students, the parents, the coaches, they all know that they're working in tandem, they're not working in isolation and making these decisions solely based on their own opinions at this point.
So I think basically, you know, short of this document being completed prior to the next cycle, right, of, you know, prepping for our spring sports, we just want assurance that eat, you know, for, for each season of sports, that the coaches are being, you know, are, are having these meetings, that they're being instructed, they're being told, and that these, these pieces of information are being delivered. So in short of, you know, not having this 50-page document ready yet, which we totally understand, you know, we just want to make sure that every coach who, you know, is, is here at Springford, same messaging.
Our, our process and our, our policy, our philosophy will be shared, even if we haven't more, officially memorialized it yet into a document.
So just a logistics question. So if a policy is not being drawn, nor are we looking at drawing a policy? And it's, we're talking about extracurricular activities here. It probably should be housed in the Extracurricular Committee, period.
Our goal was, our goal is for it to be handled by administration and staff. But if, if necessary, we will move to the next level and that would be a policy. And then once, if we have to go down that road, which sounds like, you know, Mr. Rizzo, they're all over it. So hopefully we won't have to do that, so we'll, we'll just see what happens.
And Mr. Sheriff, I don't disagree with you. I do think it lands in the world of, of extracurricular. Since it was brought up in policy, we will still report out in policy as, as an agenda item. But it will be handled in, in, in your committee.
There's gonna be some tension between the Policy and Extracurricular Committee. I, I look, I look forward to it.
I think she'll take you in a normal swing match, though.
I'm sure we'll read about it on Facebook.
Just, just real briefly on that particular topic, though, that, understand, because I don't want there to be anybody to walk out of here thinking that we are going to run into situations where a student is on a team and there is a game. And that same student is involved in another activity. For example, the play, the spring play. Let's say a student is on a team and they're in spring play, they're, they're doing, they're doing their performance. They've also got a game, they do have to choose what direction they're gonna go. So I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be able to avoid those kind of conflicts, no matter what language you put out there. But what we don't want to see is a student being told either or, you, if you do that, you're not gonna be part of this. Or, uh, this is gonna be the consequence. We wanna, we, we want to be very adamant and, and about that, that, uh, we want to work with our students and make sure they have full range of opportunities.
Okay, um, so just a final board comment. I think we do need to have an exec session on those two items under, um, programming and curriculum. Okay, and before we do that, uh, public to be heard.
Actually, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry, word board comment?
Yeah, I, um, we actually, um, had our legislative meeting this week. I will be reporting out next week, but I just wanted to throw out to the board members, there are two dates to keep in mind. March 23rd is, um, Day of Action in Harrisburg. And March 27th is the Legislative Breakfast at the MCIU, um, for board members. So, um, we'll talk more about it next week, but just some dates to throw on your calendars.
Alright, well, thank you for that mini update. And any more board comment? Okay, public to be heard?
Melanie Bowen, Upper Providence. Um, I just wanted to make a quick comment about the 2021 proposed calendar. I became aware of that- I became aware of that calendar because it was posted as an attachment to tonight's board agenda. And I just wanted you to be aware that that's how the public became aware of it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. But actually, we were made aware of, we were made aware of discussions or Facebook threads, what have you, about two weeks ago before it even hit.
It was actually, it was longer than that. And it, because this agenda wasn't created until last week and it was already, all the stuff was already out. And we were already receiving calls from people like weeks ago. So I could appreciate what you're saying, but unfortunately-
That's how I became, I should say, that's how I became aware.
Well, and that's fine, I mean, and that's fine. But unfortunately, that information was already out, you know, a few weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public to be heard? All right. Well, thank you for that. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
A second? Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. And can I ask you to please retire to the room over there so we can have our exec session?